Good morning. At this time, if you have a cell phone, could you please silence it during our press conference? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, everyone, for attending. We are joined today by Commissioner Tony Massar, Commissioner Rick Mirabito, Director of Public Safety Jeff Hutchins, President Judge Nancy Butts, District Attorney Ryan Gardner, Director of Administration Matt McDermott, our Warden Brad Schumaker, and Sheriff Mark Losk. Thank you, everyone, for attending. The Lycoming County Commissioners have been in constant contact with federal, state, C cap, local, and public health authorities regarding COV ID COVID-19. We recognize the seriousness of this public health crisis. We have been working diligently with many of the officials in this room to develop a proactive plan moving forward. These are uncharted waters for all of us. There is no blueprint or playbook to follow. It is important that we remain calm throughout this crisis. Caution and being diligent with the necessary safeguards is the combination needed. We are developing practices and innovative approaches to reduce face-to-face interaction. It is important that we advance social distancing while providing services to our residents. At this time, all county buildings will remain open. Late yesterday afternoon, the county employees received a plan moving forward, which will be expanded on by our Director Matt McDermott. The county will provide essential services, but we are asking the public to please limit any contact at county buildings. If it's not an emergency, please stay home. Obtaining a dog license, a marriage license, a passport at this time is not necessary. Many items may be paid online or mailed to the staff. If you're unsure of any item or a deadline, please call that department. Our goal is to minimize the face-to-face contact so that we flatten the curve of this pandemic. At this time, I would call upon Commissioner Tony Massar for comments.
Good morning. And messaging can change every hour. So you have to understand what we're telling you here currently can change by noon. And so we're going to tell you that Lycoming County is going to follow the procedures that are recommended, not mandated, by the CDC, federal or state governments. And that's important, not mandated, because we all have civil liberties. And we're going to try to follow every one of those recommendations, and we urge you to do the same. I'll keep my comments brief. I'm sure my colleague will be speaking about some of the procedures. As we're speaking currently, Congressman Keller is on the phone talking to the Department of Labor, and they have plans in place or creating these plans for our small business owners who also have fears. We, all three Commissioners, are business owners, and our employees have the fears just as much as our public sector and our Lycoming County employees. So things are changing there, but there is legislation being introduced to handle some of those concerns. The next speaker will be Commissioner Mirabito.
Good morning. So there are two points I'd just like to emphasize. What we do as individuals affects our entire community. We all have challenges, whether it's small businesses or other life-breaking events. But our capacity to put aside momentarily, and when we say momentarily, we, I have been looking at this as a 30-day, or as my colleague said, day-to-day. So certainly for the next 16 days, we're asking the public and following the CDC and Department of Health to put aside your individual needs for the greater community. It's going to make a huge difference. You may be healthy, but someone you come in contact with is at risk, whether it's a grandparent or whether it's someone who has a compromised immune system. So the unselfish act at this point is to put aside for the next 16 days our individual needs. And by the way, parenthetically, if we told people to prepare for a flood, they would listen to that. Well, the CDC and the Department of Health have told us to prepare for this, and so that's what we should be doing. The second point is that we have a responsibility to ourselves, to our community, to get accurate information. The places to get accurate information are from the CDC and from the PA Department of Health. We also have a responsibility not to pass on information we don't know to be accurate, because all it does is raise questions that we don't need. So with that, I will invite our Director of Public Safety Jeff Hutchins to come and give us a briefing.
Good morning. The Department of Public Safety is maintaining contact with the Pennsylvania Department of Health, as well as the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Association. Numbers are typically posting around lunchtime. We're still operating with 96 cases in Pennsylvania. That is yesterday's data. The closest to us being Columbia, excuse me, Luzerne County. The news is reporting three presumptive cases at Geisinger. That has not been confirmed yet. However, you will see that our hospitals in the region are taking their proactive steps to be prepared. Tents are being set up. Disasters have been declared. Their incident management team is meeting twice a day, and they are prepared to take the steps. Currently here in the county, UPMC Williamsport is preparing a collection site. I defer any other questions in reference to where that's going to be over to UPMC. If you're not aware, the Commissioners did sign a disaster declaration on the 16th after the Governor did declare for the state. That just helps with some throughput right now in case down the road, any other legislature or finance becomes available. We are experiencing a partial EOC activation just Monday through Friday during normal business hours, just as a monitoring state at this time. I did have a request from the public to speak about the US mail. The question came up, is there any threat of dispersment through the mail? I reached out to the CDC, the World Health Organization, and also the Surgeon General have indicated there's currently no evidence that COVID-19 is being spread through the So additionally, if you believe you are ill, the best thing you can do right now is contact your family physician. They can, in turn, consult with the Pennsylvania Department of Health and decide if testing is necessary. They also can reach out to commercial laboratories, whoever they're contracted with, because testing is also available through that route now. Any other questions for the Department of Health can be, you can call them at 1-877-PA-HEALTH or health.pa.gov. Their website, as well as the CDC website, are being constantly updated. And with this, I'll turn it over to President Judge Nancy Butts.
Good morning. As of March 16th, the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania declared a judicial emergency for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and it was on that same date that I, as the President Judge, declared a judicial emergency in Lycoming County. That order will go from March 16th through April the 14th. So what we did as a Board of Judges was we went back and we looked at our schedule, and we determined what hearings needed to go and what could be postponed beyond that 14th of April date. So at this point, each of the judges has been reaching out to the attorneys and advising them as to which cases will still be going and which will be postponed until after that date. If you are one of those individuals that is still coming in for court, we would request that you not bring anyone else but those needed to come in with you, as to minimize the number of people that are coming into the courthouse. People are thinking that the courthouse is closed. That's absolutely not true. We need to be open for emergencies, which we will continue to do. But if at all possible, please do not come in. If you have a question about something, for example, if you need to contact the prothonitaries office, I would direct your attention to the online resources that are available. The Law Library is currently closed. However, if you go online off the Court Administrator's website, I believe it is, there is a link to the Law Library where you can access information there. The prothonitaries office, the Court Administrator's office, the Magisterial District Judges, they all have current webpages that you can get information from those sites. If you are currently on supervision with the Adult Probation Office, the Juvenile Probation Office, or you have a case open with domestic relations, please call that office before you come into the building, because they will give you instructions. It's our hope that individuals that are participating with any of those offices will participate by phone or by video, or your respective probation officers will meet you in the field, as to eliminate or reduce the amount of traffic into the courthouse. Specifically, the prothonitaries office is not receiving any more passport applications effective tomorrow through April the 1st. The Treasurer's Office reminds people that between today, or excuse me, tomorrow and April the 1st, that if you want to file or get current tax year information, apply for a fishing, hunting, or dog license, obtain a small game of chance, or a bingo permit, you can do this either online, or you can call their office, and they can mail the information to you, and you can return that information through the mail. But they want to reduce or eliminate the foot traffic to those offices as well for those specific items. If you still have an obligation to a Magisterial District Judge for financial payment of a cost or a fine, we would also direct you to the online resources to make those payments there. But again, if that's not available to you because you don't have the internet, then just call the MDJ's office before you come in, so that they can give you instructions on how you make those payments. With regard to the Register Recorder's Office, I know I've received a number of texts from realtors or individuals that do title searches after having a conversation with the Register Recorder. Keep in mind that something that's not a priority, such as a title search or a bring-down, if you don't have to be doing that work in the Register Recorder's Office, please don't come. But they're still accepting titles, mortgages, deeds. If you have to settle an estate and you need short certificates, you can still come in for letters of testimony or letters of administration. Remember that marriage licenses are good for 60 days, so you don't have to get it on day one, knowing that your wedding is almost 60 days away. The idea is to reduce or eliminate the need for people to come into the courthouse. We are open. We are available for emergencies. But if you do come in for a hearing, we would request that you not bring more than the people that are required to be there. I would turn it over, then, to the District Attorney Ryan Gardner.
Good morning, everyone. You know, we've heard the term "fluid" being used throughout since we first began the conversation. Despite the fluidity of this situation, I cannot impress enough upon everyone and all listeners that the safety and welfare of the community is not and will not be compromised. Law enforcement will continue to have a strong presence, as it always has. If crimes are committed, those crimes will be prosecuted. No one is getting a free pass despite any adjustment that is being made to minimize person-to-person contact. This is not the time for anyone to take advantage of any reduction in personnel that may be implemented, as far as the courts are concerned, or county government. If anyone interprets any reduction or modification of procedure as a weakness, they would be wrong. The DA's office will continue to work with all branches of government as we wade through these waters.
Good morning. Lycoming County leaders, employees, residents, take this situation seriously. Apply a common sense approach to all actions with respect to the services we provide, the care of our employees, yourselves, and your families. Our residents, please follow the guidance provided by the federal, state, and county leaders and experts. Pennsylvania has been mentioned at the national level as being one of the most prepared states. Continue to do what you're doing, the great work you're doing. Above all else, remain calm as we navigate COVID-19 together. We will get through this. We do not have all the answers, but we are working collectively to continue to develop safety and operating guidance as we navigate COVID-19 in the days, weeks, and months ahead. For the public, as the President Judge and others have already stated, if you do have business at any county office, please call ahead. Call first to see what you can do online or what you can do over the phone, what may not be currently listed online. And we'll work with you to make arrangements to limit your requirement to come in. Couple of things that have occurred at the county level. One, all official non-mission essential travel has been canceled through 1 May 2020. More travel restrictions are probably likely as the situation develops. Two, the Commissioners have designated employees as mission essential, as determined by their Department heads. However, consistent with CDC guidelines, employees who are sick, who have been exposed to COVID-19, are expected to stay home. Those of you who are designated as high-risk for illness from COVID-19, or are the primary caregivers to a higher-risk individual, may not be able to report to work, and we understand these challenges. And to that end, the county is expanding the ability to work from home remotely where feasible. County employees may utilize long-term sick leave to address individual and/or personal COVID-19-related requirements. Three, continue to practice social distancing in all operational aspects. Stay six feet apart and limit group settings to no more than 10 individuals. Less is better. Limit by all means face-to-face contact wherever possible. All county employees are highly encouraged to utilize our Teladoc service through CoreSource if they feel sick. Use 1-800-TELADOC or go to the HR page on lycoming.org to get started. Every department head, manager, supervisor, and employee has the inherent responsibility and duty to report when one of us has traveled to a known or suspected area impacted by COVID-19, known or suspected contact with someone who is exposed to COVID-19, or diagnosed with COVID-19. Report this to Lycoming County Human Resources through your leadership chain of command. The Resource Management Services recycling staff will be removing drop-off boxes in Lycoming County starting tomorrow. Correction, starting this morning, and those boxes should be collected by tomorrow afternoon. Use orange cones to block off the areas, so individuals found past those areas are considered trespassing and littering. Any litter found on these locations will be the responsibility of the boroughs and townships. We will continue to keep you updated with the latest pertinent information as it becomes available. Anticipate updates to format in the venue that we put this information out to change to some web-based format in the very near future. I will be followed by our Warden Petchman.
Good morning. The Lycoming County prison continues to support our mission while also understanding the unique challenges that we're facing currently. In response to that, we have taken a few necessary steps. Effective Monday, March 16th, we, sorry about the feedback, we have canceled all inmate visitation until further notice. We've also, in an effort to encourage social distancing, have postponed all of our outside volunteers from entering our facility that perform or conduct our inmate programming. The inmates still have access to services to contact their family in the form of secure messaging, and also the ability to make phone calls out to their families. Due to the modifications in the court schedules that were described earlier by President Judge Butts, we have allowed attorney-client contacts, so that all inmates still have access to their attorneys, and will be able to discuss their ongoing criminal procedures. We also are working very diligently to try to explain to the inmate population and our staff to take this seriously, as Director McDermott stated. In doing so, we're continually educating our staff and the inmate population on the information that is provided to us on a daily basis. And as we have explained to them, it is a fluid situation. We are going to continually be updating them on any new information as we receive it. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sheriff Losk.
Good morning. I'm not old enough to remember the 1919 influenza outbreak, but I've read about it, and it was really scary. I had family who was affected by the polio outbreak in the 40s and 50s, and although I remember taking the sugar cube before Dr. Jonas Salk came up with, or taking the sugar cube once he came up with the solution, and feeling much better. So we haven't, real-time, experienced anything like this pandemic. I really need to say that this meeting didn't, it culminated in meetings we've had for the past week and a half at the county level. Everyone that you see standing here, and many more of our partners, have worked almost hourly to determine how we go forward and how we continue to assess and reassess. I would believe by lunchtime, we'll have another meeting. That's how often we are looking at this and reevaluating it. So we've been very cohesive as a county operation. From a law and order standpoint, the DA said it best, we won't take a backseat for crime. Law enforcement is not going to slow down. We're going to continue to do what we need to do, and do it as we've always done it. From the impacts in the Sheriff's Office, effective tomorrow, I will no longer be processing license to carries. The old phrase was, I just drew a blank, was gun permit. But those that would expire, there's a fairly unknown secret, unknown law that allows you six months, once you expire, to be able to be lawful in carrying a firearm. If you do not have a prohibition that you can't carry the firearm, you can carry the firearm. So there'll be none of those issues starting tomorrow. Personal property levies and judgments, civil service, I will stop those tomorrow also, except for emergency requests, emergency situations that I might get from the court. We have greatly reduced our inmate movement. We move inmates continually from across the state. We recognize the need to stop that, because we don't know what they may be bringing with them. So we've worked very diligently with the court system, as well as with the prison, to minimize that. This isn't about panic. It's about making good, sound judgment and using good, sound judgment. And for anyone to say, well, this is just nothing, like the analogy that this group has heard from me a number of times, is this just kind of like the train's coming, the tornado's coming, and we prepare like for the flooding that we get in this county. It's coming. We don't know when, and we don't know how bad. We've had flood threats that we've prepared for, and we got hammered. We've had flood threats that we prepared for, and we got nothing. We hope we get nothing. But it's better to prepare for the worst and hope for the best, and just use good common sense. Thank
At this time, will we answer any questions from the media or the audience?
Commissioner, some of the utility companies have suspended, shut off some services and that type of situation. Is the Water Authority in the same situation in Lycoming County, where they're going to keep the water on, in the situation where they may have to shut it off for lack of payment?
It is my understanding at this time, there will be no utilities shut off, speaking Any other questions at this time?
On the inmate population as well, other counties in Pennsylvania have recently allowed nonviolent offenders out to mitigate the community spread in the jail. Is that something Lycoming County's looking at as well?
I will leave that to the President Judge and the Warden.
To answer that question, we believe that it's our responsibility to review the status of every inmate, to determine where they are in the system, and to the extent that individuals who may be eligible for a release on supervised bail, they would be released. To the situation where a person may be just quite at the end of when their case could be brought in, and they could be released after sentencing, we consider that to be an emergent situation, so we would handle that person in a timely way. So I guess to specifically answer your question is, we're reviewing the situation of every inmate to determine, with public safety in mind, what can we do with this individual? Can we get them sentenced and move them on to state prison, because that's ultimately where they're going? That's something we would do. Is it someone who could be sentenced imposed, and then as a part of the plea agreement, they're released because of some other programming? Yes, we could do that, too. But I guess the general answer is that we're evaluating every single inmate that's in the prison to see who doesn't need to remain in the prison any longer than they have to. Okay? Thank you.
Any other questions at this time?
With seniors that are in the most at-risk population right now, and so many of them on a either fixed income or a financial situation or strained with what's going on now, has the county considered suspending payments of property taxes in the short term?
That has not been discussed at this time, but it's a great question, and we'll explore that.
You mentioned also that they have until April 30th to pay the taxes, actually at a discount. They can pay till April 30th at a discount.
Has Lycoming County had any presumptive positive cases of COVID-19?
The only cases that I'm aware of in the region presumptive are the three that were announced at Geisinger, and due to hit, but they were not releasing which one of the facilities is in. So we do have Geisinger, Jersey Shore in the area, but I can't tell. They're the only thing I'm aware of.
Okay, I believe we would all agree that there's many things in life that are much bigger than us. And I would leave the press conference with this. Joshua 1:9, "Have I not commanded you, be strong and courageous? Do not be frightened, and do not be dismayed, for the Lord your God is with you wherever you go." And I just ask everybody to remain calm, and continue to watch out for your neighbor, especially the elderly at this time. Thank you for attending.